I still want to keep that.
Come right on up. Thank you for waiting.
So sorry.
It's okay.
Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Sure. It's Craig Dominguez. I'm at 284 Southwest Peak Court in Port St. Lucie, St. Lucie County. I'm also a Florida resident my entire life. I'm very familiar with the destruction that can happen in Florida. Being raised in Davie, born and raised in Broward County. You want to see destruction? Go to Broward County. Grow up there from, you know, early 1960s and look what it is now. You know, sawgrass, river of grass, old fishing holes destroyed, plowed over, paved over. I mean, that's true destruction. What's going on here is also the same thing. I think a lot of what ties into it, though, is, and let me preface this, I am a branch manager for Scott's Lawn Service. I am licensed by the state in the BMPs, LNO, GHP, you know, all that good stuff. I could answer some agronomic questions if you'd like to and what would happen with your lawn. But, you know, the one thing as a Florida resident my whole life that I see is like the number one cause of all this is just rampant growth. I mean, with every new person comes in or family, we have a new driveway. We have a new roof. We have some area that was once natural now torn up. And it's just, it's never-ending. So where we had all these areas where rain would normally fall in an open field and it would filter down into the aqua fur and everything would be cool, now we have four homes in that area with rooftops that drain onto the driveways, the driveways drain into the road. The road has a little cut that goes out to a pond or a canal directly. I heard ditches and stuff brought up earlier. You know, they look nice and empty when the rain isn't flooding, but I live in an area down in St. Lucie County where all those ditches empty in what we call the Horseshoe Canal. Next stop from Horseshoe Canal is the river. I can take pictures. I've taken pictures. I haven't prepped them yet for this meeting, but I wanted to show other meetings like this, how much garbage, tires. I've seen porta-johns floating down that thing, going into, over the lock and into the river. And then, you know, fertilizer, really? And here's just, I mean, big hunks of garbage that comes out of that ditch, big patches. They look like islands of debris, grass, branches, all this kind of stuff. Ends up in my backyard. I got to clean it up because when the water subsides, it's all left there like, you know, the tide receding. But just a few things. What would happen if you didn't fertilize your grass? It would probably decline. It's not going to be the healthiest looking of grasses. There's not going to be any tremendous effect to the river. But if you did fertilize your grass, it would become a better filter for the river. If everyone had a healthy stand of turf or there was some equivalent to turf along the river that was there as a filter, it'd be like an air filter for your air conditioning in your house. That's how you got to think of turf grass, is that kind of filter. Does something go into turf grass like a granular fertilizer, a prill? Okay, round little BB. Hits that thatch layer of St. Augustine fluorotam, which is the most prominent of St. Augustine varieties, there isn't nothing, there is nothing that's going to pull that prill out of the thatch layer. Now, leaching studies, and Lori Trendholm would be, I'm not a scientist, she had an eight-year study, leaching studies would better answer how that prill is going to move because it's the only thing, the place for it to go is down because it's not coming out. Once it hits that intertwining thatch layer, that prill is either going to melt and wash in or be held like in the case of slow release until it is released downward slowly. But nonetheless, it's not going to do horizontal movement. It's only going to do vertical movement in the turf grass. But let's say you have, you're not fertilizing, your grass is kind of 50% weeds, 50% grass, crabgrass browns out during the winter. You've seen it when it gets real cold, those lawns that are all browned out. Now you're going to go fertilize those. There's no filtering capabilities in that. It's all weeds. Anything you do put on is not going to be held. It's going to be shot through, allowed to move. That is a direct point source pollution because you know whatever you put in that area is not going to stay in that area as if you did have a healthy turf grass. I also heard that one pound of nitrogen per year is enough for lawns. That's just false. That's just absolutely, unequivocally, without a fact, not true. If you want to maintain a healthy lawn, not saying six pounds or four pounds, everything can be different, depends on the environment you're dealing with, how often someone mows, how often someone waters. There's a lot of cultural practices and that's what businesses like ours do. We train and educate people on the proper cultural practices to maintain a healthy lawn. So putting fertilizer down is like this much of it. I tell the homeowners, we come out there, we do our thing in 10 minutes, but 98% of your lawn is, do you mow it correctly? Do you water it correctly? Are you doing the other things? Are you riding your car, you know, and using it as a driveway? So now you've got the ruts and you've got the compact soil now that isn't doing any filtering. And yeah, that's flowing just like a driveway. So cultural practices are a real biggie when it comes to that. Fertilizer, you know, I hear talk about Unity and I know Indian River or the county just passed. Sebastian, you already heard it and St. Lucie hasn't. Sebastian brought it up again. We talked, we're doing this ballet. I mean, it's all the same faces and I spoke to a lot of you last time when this came up. And there are some true facts out there. I hear more feelings than facts, but there are some true facts. And Lori Trendholm, Dr. Trendholm's study, eight years, you know, not financed by any of us. And there's been others, Dr. Cesar, Scott's is actually doing it. I hesitate to even say that, but Nopapa, Florida, we've been running leaching studies as well. If we didn't need to use fertilizer, it would help our P and L big time. I mean, we don't go out there and use them unless they're needed. My guys have strict orders because I need to retain or control my chemical cost. If it doesn't need it, don't use it. If we have pests that aren't active, we're not applying insect controls at, you know, $400 an ounce to control something that's not there. So as an industry, we're pretty wise and pretty smart with what we're doing and how we're trained to do it. But an ordinance, for instance, it was brought up at Sebastian, you have blackouts on the West Coast, left and right, up and down. People are going to go to a place that they can buy fertilizer because there are some places, Home Depot actually got fined over there. Again, they don't do that anymore, but they had some kind of organic chicken stuff on their thing. It had a small percentage of nitrogen in it. They didn't even think about it, but they were fined because they were even holding it. One of our True Green Trucks got pulled over by about five different state agencies like it was hauling cocaine. They were looking for nitrogen on this truck. I mean, the FDAX, the county, FHP, you name it, pulled them over and just shot through this truck, right? None was there. So someone's going to go to another county and they're going to buy it because now all of a sudden the professionals who are trained can't put it down anymore because we're going to follow the law. We're not going to take a chance, you know, corporations, companies. So we tell Joe Schmo, he can't do that anymore. He's going to go over to the next county or wherever he can get it from, order it online and have it drop shipped ground at his front door. And then he's going to go out there and put it at a four-time rate because more is better. You know, that's the concept. We do it ourselves. With house cleaning agents, oh, the shower tile cleaner, that's put in three ounces instead of one. That's the kind of mentality you'll create. Another thing I'd like to bring up is that it will force us as an industry, in order to keep happy customers, to fertilize early season, late season heavier, especially using SCUs. It is a fact that turf grass sloughs off its root systems during the fall in the cooler months. In other words, if it had this much roots during the summer, it has now this much during the fall. You're telling us, okay, go ahead and fertilize now with this much roots to catch the fertilizer compared to right now or during the blackout period when it has this much roots. So that's dangerous for what we're trying to all accomplish here is water quality. So all of a sudden, we say blackout can only fertilize here and it was brought up, that blackout can be longer because as a service-based company or route-driven company, we're not going to be able to get to everyone on May 30th, you know, May 29th done. We're not going to get to everyone on October 1st. So there could be five, six months without fertilization. And the reason that some of these places are exempt from it because they're high-traffic areas, number one. So when you have high-traffic areas, you don't want to be left with dirt. You know, golf courses, things like that, municipalities, parks, you don't want to be left with dirt because that gets ugly, that gets muddy, that allows things to flow out. You know, that's why you've got to put up stuff on roads when you're putting in new hills to keep the runoff from going. So they're allowed. That same principle should follow through to a lawn, to keep a lawn healthy and to keep it growing and to keep it doing what we need to do, which is filter because, you know, John Smith goes out, does an oil change in his driveway. Okay, some of that oil drips or whatever else. Clean the Lysol cleaner and we dump that Lysol cleaner after we're done with the mop bucket and we throw it outside. Okay, that's a pretty heavy-duty chemical. The lawn that surrounds our work area, our live areas will help filter those, you know, things that aren't even being brought up here as pollutants, which they are. Last, because I know you all are tired and so is everyone else, Tallahassee and Washington and St. Lucie County, we see it every day. We see the bag of green water, the lagoon report coming out of West Palm, you know, every day, four, 500 times a day. It's all there. And, you know, doing what I do, I'm obviously pretty in tuned and keeping an eye on these things. I very rarely hear out of Tallahassee and Washington, and we had Davoski from the county commission, St. Lucie, up there. He brought a group up there. They were up there not even bringing up fertilizer. They're bringing up Laco, they're bringing up a lot of things, but no one in Tallahassee or Washington is saying we need to ban fertilizer. That seems to be something that caught on to the West Coast and moved over here to the East Coast with Martin County. Martin County wasn't listening to anything. They didn't want to hear facts. They didn't call Dr. Lori Trendholm, nothing. This came up like a first reading and it was done and it was over and it was passed. The body language, the moment I walked into the room, I could tell and kind of sensing a little bit of that here. But really, there are some very sound facts out there of science that St. Augustine can benefit you, just like that air filter in your air conditioning in your house. St. Augustine will act like that. There are some perks, you know, healthy, green-looking lawn improves property values. Can't go without saying that. You go to look for a house and you pull up and that lawn's all dirty and raggedy, you're probably going, the inside better look pretty good, you know, for us to buy this one. So there are some facts out there that I would just implore, beg, plead with you, more professional people, more scientifically trained people than myself and others that have spoke here. This is the first reading. On the second reading, call some of them in. It's going to be a melee. I know there's going to be the other side and there's going to be our side, but there are some sound facts. Just asking like Todd was earlier, that we just kind of listen to what some others have to say in regards to those sound facts, not, well, I'm a doctor in agriculture and we've been doing studies for X amount of years and this is bad. Where's your PowerPoints? Where's your data? It can never be produced in a lot of these meetings that I see and watch. You can go look at some archives. Look at Sebastian, September 11th, you'll see what I'm talking about. A lot of get up there, a lot of feeling, but very little facts. Dr. Lori Trendholm, here it is, the leaching studies, blah, 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 eight years. And then we start to pick apart what's central, what's not central, what's south. Flat out, there are some very intelligent people out there, far more than myself, that could explain some of these things. But if you have any questions, one last, I promise. I always hear this, and this is the first time I'm bringing it up in one of these, there's so much nitrogen in rain, right? And that's enough to maintain your lawn. That same nitrogen is raining into your river. There's so much phosphorus in the soils that we don't need phosphorus. Well, that same soil is making up the canal bank. So again, that's just common sense on that one. We can't divert the rain from getting into the river, so if rain's enough, then why do we need to fertil, why are there yellow lawns? Can you go out there and find a yellow lawn? Yes. Has it rained tremendously? Yes. Why isn't that lawn green? You know, just common, little common sense on that one. So again, I don't want to keep you any longer, but I just had to say a few things. If there's any questions, be happy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Can I change the subject?
No. Come on, Charlie.
No, because we need to.
This is Enric, the proposal by Jay Kramer regarding naming of the street over by the Marina. Is that permitted? I just wanted to say I'm all for it. He was a very valuable asset to the Sailing Foundation when he passed away.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. Not only a valuable asset, but one of the greatest guys, sweetest guys, really. Steve Martin, just an outstanding guy. I can remember him sitting with his back against one mast and one 420 and me in another. And us old men out there with kids. I mean, Steve Martin, wonderful guy. We miss him.
Yes, sir. Stand up and, no, guy behind you, Charlie.
Hi, John Orkut.
No, that's all right.
Thank you.
Good evening, John.
Good evening. My name is John Orkut. I live at 4665 Pebble Bay South. I've lived on the lagoon for 28 years. The lagoon is much different today than it was that long ago. I'm obviously here tonight to talk to you about, please pass a strong fertilizer ordinance, including zero phosphorus without a soil test, a summer ban, 50% minimum slow release and a 10-foot buffer. I'd like to read a couple headlines that I just went through and Googled today. I think it gives us a really good view of how our lagoon is today. And these are actual headlines. Deadly bacteria keep kids out of the Indian River Lagoon. Brown tide hammering Indian River Lagoon and its fish. Manatee pelican deaths suggest serious problems for Indian River Lagoon. Save the Lagoon, Indian River Lagoon in Crisis. Commercial fishermen struggle as restaurants shun Indian River Lagoon seafood. Indian River Lagoon County loses 60% of sea grasses. That is not a cycle. Fishermen likely contracted near fatal infection in lagoon. Wow, the lagoon is dying. These are Googled headlines that I pulled off today. I've known Brian LaPointe for probably 30 years. And to make the assumption that Brian LaPointe thinks septic tanks is the only problem in Indian River County is not correct. I've heard a number of other things. I'd like to rebut, but I won't take the time to do so. There's a lot of research that's come out of the University of Florida that shows that grass can survive the summer ban. And it's probably more appropriate research that's done in South Florida instead of in the Gainesville area. I own a home outside Gainesville. I own a home here. The growing seasons are totally different. To apply the research from University of Florida in North Florida to us is not applicable. With the problems in the lagoon we have, here in our county, we have Vera Beach City and the county, we only have three solutions. The three solutions are stormwater management, expensive. We can eliminate the impact of septic tanks. I know the city has done some really good work behind the scenes. I know they're working on that. It's expensive. The last one is to attack fertilizer. Dealing with one of these alone will not solve the problem. Addressing all three may give the lagoon a chance. Tracy, thank you for sharing your discussion about the utility plant. That was very informative and I'm glad to see that the city took that on their own initiative. A strong fertilizer ordinance is the most cost-effective solution to our problem. Over a 12-month period, there was 4,000 tons of fertilizer sold in Indian River County. We need to make the best effort possible to keep these nutrients out of our lagoon. A strong fertilizer ordinance will help. The University of Florida IFAS publication ENH 1115 is titled this. Frequently Asked Questions About Landscape Fertilization For Fort Florida Friendly Landscape Ordinances. Question number four in that document says, are the current fertilizer recommendations based on environmental water quality protection? And the answer they give is no. Research at UF has traditionally been based on turf grass quality. We've had lots of discussion tonight about optimizing turf grass quality. A study out of South Florida has shown the quality of grass can maintain itself for almost eight months. Municipalities on the West Coast of Florida have had strong fertilizer ordinances for a number of years. We have learned and can learn from these examples. By adopting a strong fertilizer ordinance and addressing other point source and non-point source pollution, Sarasota Bay and Tampa Bay systems are making a comeback. It's not just fertilizer, no, but it's a multi-tier approach, doing everything we can to keep nutrients out of the water bodies. People's lawns are not dying. You don't hear an outcry that they need to loosen up fertilizer ordinances for the sake of failing lawns. We're assuming from what we hear today that the lawns are failing. They're not. It's working over there. The state is not taking legal action against fertilizer ordinances in nearly 50 municipalities that have passed strong ordinances. This is a legitimate thing to do if you really care about the lagoon. The lawn care professionals are not crying the blues on the other side of the state because it is hurting their business. In fact, if you randomly Google and call such companies, they will tell you their revenues are intact, they're doing well, and they're saving money on fertilizer costs. A strong ordinance here will enable us to capitalize on a professionally-developed public education system that has been implemented and tested on the other side of the state. You can find it as B Floridian online. With all the talk about the lagoon, you now have the opportunity to really take result-oriented action to benefit the lagoon. This is where the rubber meets the road. All the press we've heard, all the talk, all of this, it doesn't get us results. This is an inexpensive mechanism to try to get some results. You have graciously joined the Indian River Lagoon Coalition as the city of Vera Beach. 150 organizations have signed on to this and a lot of people stand behind you to pass a strong ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward. Good evening, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Bennett, 6310 Northwest 52nd Street, Carl Springs, Florida. What the heck am I doing in Vera tonight? I'm the general manager for Scott's Lawn Service in South Florida. So I cover from Homestead to Sebastian. And I have a satellite in Port St. Lucie who covers this area. We have approximately 4,000 customers in that base out of Port St. Lucie and approximately 1,000 of them are in Vera Beach. So there are quite a few customers, just in our little small business in Vera Beach, that are going to be impacted by this. We kind of, we agree with the model ordinance. We obviously oppose the blackout. That's 25% of my business, which means I may have to cut employees. That's jobs, that's local jobs here in Vera Beach that that has a big impact on. And I did hear, well, if we have these blackouts, the lawns can really survive six to eight months. Well, the lawns would survive. But when the blackout period's over, and I think someone mentioned this earlier, we're going to have to apply very high rates of slow-release fertilizer to get them back into shape, get them thriving, to build that root structure back to where it is, a natural water filter. When we do that, there's probably the chance of more runoff than anything happening. And when you have very thin turf, you have erosion. And erosion has a very big impact on water quality. So I would urge you guys to keep the model ordinance that you have. And hopefully in my second, in the second reading here, I can get a good portion of those 1,000 people out here and pack this room and let some of your people here in Vera Beach talk to you about what's going on. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, may I ask you one question?
Sure.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We've heard the same exact, that one particular study at the University of Florida, the scientists you guys have keep mentioning, Trendholm.
I didn't mention anyone.
You guys have mentioned her over and over and over. But my question to you is, you stated that the root system is going to deteriorate and then you're going to have to throw lots and lots and lots of fertilizer to get it back. Do you have any scientific data that you can reference that shows that will happen?
I am not a doctor or a PhD or anything like that. And yes, there probably is. I don't have any of that factual base with me tonight.
If you can, if you can get some kind of a study and send that to our city clerk so we can read that before the second reading, I'd appreciate that. Because I would like to see that data compared side by side with the other woman you keep referencing.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Anyone else like to speak? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to move it to a second hearing on November the 5th.
I'll second it.
Oh.
Oh, I didn't know you were, yeah. Go ahead. Under discussion?
Under discussion.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm Richard Baker. I'm with the Pelican Island Audubon Society. I worked for IFAS for a number of years myself, so IFAS is a big tent, actually. You can find all kinds of figures and people on, it's just like the public, they're representing the public, so. And one of the things, the South Florida, and Dr. Orkut brought up a good point, that there was a scientist in Fort Lauderdale from IFAS, and I think that's one of the studies that you should probably get too, Cesar, who showed that the rainy ban period did not really affect the turf. His research is not getting the emphasis from the turf industry as the others. But a strong ordinance has really been passed by over 50-some governmental agencies, most of on the West Coast, but we have finally the county commission in Indian River County and Martin County and a few cities in Bivard, we're becoming that way. But nitrogen is a toxic substance to the lagoon. And it's, if you, like, controlling this nitrogen, you're saving the toxic effect and not having that algae that's appearing because of all this nitrogen that's occurring in that area. And the lagoon has been declared impaired by the EPA and the DEP. The lagoon is in really bad shape and they're going to be coming down on all the citizens in this area to clean it up. It's coming. And a strong ordinance, as Dr. Orkut brought it out, you know, it saves people money. I mean, I don't fertilize. I mean, if you want to put a little fertilizer out once in a while, you can. And most of the people don't put any out. If they do, they put it on themselves. They don't necessarily hire these people. They're going to lose their jobs. But think of the people that have jobs in the lagoon. There's a whole bunch of people that depend upon that lagoon for a livelihood. And so if a few turf people are going to be inconvenienced for a four-month ban, I don't think that's a big price. And if you're going to start taking the nitrogen out, estimates are that it's going to cost you $2,000 to take out one pound of fertilizer, nitrogen and phosphorus. So it's going to be a costly thing that we're going to have to do towards the end. And I think it's, a strong ordinance actually gives everybody in the community the ability to respond, to clean up your yard and literally take part in trying to fix the lagoon. It is a personal thing that we all can do by controlling the amount of fertilizer that goes on our lagoon. So the summer ban is really the heart of the whole situation. That's very important. It's not only just the rain coming down too. People are having irrigation going on. People water and water and water. I mean, you just drive around, you see all these sprinkler systems going on. I did ask, being in IFAS, I do know some of the scientists there, and I asked one in Gainesville, not Lori Timhoff, but another one there that was involved in the process. And I said, it's been five years now that they've been having the strong fertilizer ordinances over in the West Coast. Why isn't the University of Florida going over there investigating, doing scientific studies and seeing, well, first of all, are these lawns really, are they suffering over there? Do you hear a big complaint saying, no, we want that, we want to be able to fertilize. We don't care about our gulf, or our bay. You don't hear any of that. And I asked the scientist, why don't you go down and look at the studies about the root system in these grasses? Are those root grass, those root stems that they're talking about being bad because they aren't putting down the fertilizer, are they doing these studies over in Tampa? And he says, no. And I asked him the roots and what was it? I asked him about, I said, is it affecting the leaching? Is it affecting the color? Is the coastal and urban utilization increasing or decreasing in the bay? And I says, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for you to get money for the University of Florida to start studying these things. And he says, I've tried many times to get funding for such studies as you described, but it has not been successful. So he hasn't been able to get any money from anybody that to do the studies over there in Tampa. So I would say that you, the questions that you're asking these folks from the turf industry are really very good. And your idea of doing a multi-approach, the sewer systems, the fertilizer, and there's And your idea of doing a multi-approach, the sewer systems, the fertilizer, and there's a lot of other stuff that's going into that lagoon, too, besides nitrogen and phosphorus. I mean, everything, as they pointed out, the stuff from your car, the roads and all that. But there's, fertilizer is something we can do that doesn't cost a lot of money. It's free, and it probably saves a lot of people money, they can buy popcorn and go to movies. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll hear from the, from the golf courses.
Hear your, your. Your name and address, please.
Hi, Greg Feniger, Seventh Cypress Road in Vero Beach. Just want to hit a few things. Now, I'm very quick, as all of you know. DEP study was done throughout the state, not just in Gainesville. It was done in Fort Lauderdale, it was done in Orlando, it was done in Gainesville, it was done in Milton up in Panhandle. So they got a wide range. Dr. Cesar was part of the DEP study with Lori Trenton. He came to the same conclusions that the study came to, that fertilization is needed, that we need to fertilize. It was a DEP study for eight years. Dr. Cesar was part of it. Lori Trenton is the one that IFIS has asked to go around the state and talk to city councils whenever a city council or a city would like for her to come in. That's why we bring up Dr. Trenton. There is a study on the fertilizer bans going on right now. They have ran out of money. I welcome some of these activist groups to give money. If we do it, what's ended up going to be said is, it was done by fertilizer, you know, by turf. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, I'll probably be the first out here. I mean, I'm obviously, you know, I'm not going to stand in the way of this thing, but quite frankly, I mean, I don't see this as a stronger ordinance, I see it as a different ordinance. You know, all of a sudden now you don't, you crossed out wetlands so that you can blow your debris in wetlands where before you couldn't. And now you're giving exemptions to more people. Is it stronger? I don't think so. I'd probably need a little more time to study it, but it's different. But if this is what the council wants to do, I'll acquiesce and go with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Karen Schuster, and I live at one-twelve Thunderbird Drive in Sebastian. And just as a concerned citizen, I moved down here approximately six years ago to take advantage of the fishing and the lagoon and kayaking and everything else. And I guess I had my lawn fertilized like everybody else, but I need to know that people in charge are going to set a good example. Yes, I don't have any studies, I don't have any degree, but please set an example. I need to know that if I get my lawn fertilized, I'm not going to go someplace else and get it like it was indicated. I want to know that people are doing the right thing, even if I do this much to help. I'm afraid to go in the lagoon. When I came here, I couldn't wait to go in the lagoon. I'm afraid that I'm going to, I have a cut on my foot, it's dangerous. So if I can do a little bit and everybody else does just a little bit, maybe it's a little bit of prevention that we need so we can get to the next step and the next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I have a question for Wayne. Wayne, in this new proposal, are we still having the requirement that only one employee from the company have the training as opposed to every employee that would be putting fertilizer on the grass in the city of Vero Beach would need the required training? Because I remember bringing that up before, that I felt it was inadequate to just have an employee from an entire company, as if they're supposed to train everybody.
Oh, Tim remembers. See this, too, of course.
I think it may still be that way.
Yeah, I think.
No, I think, commercial applicators, every one of the employees has to have it. But businesses, only one employee, and.
What do you mean by a business? What's the difference between a business and a commercial applicator?
I did not write this ordinance. I assume you're talking about a commercial business. Our ordinance was a little different because we identified even our staff had to have. We had one person on there. But it's kind of excluded under here, under, it's a different ordinance. And they don't define business there, but I assume there, any kind of commercial establishment, you know.
As this moves forward, if this does go forward for a second hearing, we haven't had the vote yet, but I would like to have that discussion.
Certainly.
Because I would feel that it's important that everybody be trained, not just one in the company.
Review and see what your intent was, Tim.
My intent, I didn't write it, but I'll take a look at it. There's some, there's some issues over the business tax in there, and it doesn't work too well because of the way it works. We'll take a look at it.
Okay, Tim.
Because there was something about everybody had to have a card or their license.
Which they do now. They have a permit now whether you need a business or not, because a lot of these firms don't.
They're not in the city.
They're not domiciled in the city, and they're out of the county, in fact.
The commercial applicators, it just, it says, "Commercial fertilizer applicator shall provide proof." They have to carry a proof with them. These are commercial. But then businesses that are applying, such as, you know, the golf courses, commercial properties, where the, the employees of the business are doing.
They're doing their own law.
Private business doing their own law.
It only requires at least one employee to have a Florida-friendly best management practices, training certificate.
That's fine, as long as all the commercial applicators.
Yeah, all commercial.
If they hire a new employee, he needs to go through the training.
Mr. Mayor, can I call a question? I mean, let's move. I think Tracy's concerns that she wants to bring up next time are fine. I don't think they should be done.
Ms. Vock, you want to call the roll, please?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
I will acquiesce.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. Passage unanimously. We'll have a second reading on the fifth. Item five E, a resolution, the City Council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida repealing resolution two thousand twelve dash eighteen, establishing price and fees for Crest Lawn Cemetery, establishing hours of operation, and providing for an effective date requested by the Public Works Director.
Actually, this is a follow-up of our discussion on the Crest Lawn Cemetery and revising of the fees in order to meet our business model in which we are projecting our revenues over the next five years.
Anyone in the council or in the audience like to speak to this issue?
You're so patient.
She has.
For old people, we're up late here. I'm teasing you.
Man, I have learned a lot tonight. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Fletcher and members of the city council. I'm Emily Loy, a resident of the city of Vero Beach. Excuse me. I'm here this evening to encourage the redevelopment and the preservation of our Crest Lawn Cemetery. At this point in time, you as elected representatives of the city of Vero Beach have the opportunity to make major accomplishments in both areas, redevelopment and preservation. I hope you are dedicated to both. The proposed resolution that you have before you this evening appears to be a necessary step and the beginning of a plan to bring monetary operations in line with today's market. Your support will be appreciated. Following the adoption of this resolution after the second reading will be the appropriate time for new positive discussions regarding the preservation of Crest Lawn Cemetery. A number of citizens of Vero Beach have indicated they are interested in bringing suggestions and proposals for your consideration. I thank you for your kind attention tonight and look forward to working with you to preserve Crest Lawn Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Good to see you always. Anyone else from the audience like to speak? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move this to second reading.
Second.
Ms. Vock?
And discussion, please.
Under discussion?
Yeah. Just going to say, I, you know, we brought in a lot of numbers with the cemetery. I mean, we have had a lot of issues with it, but I guess I still have reservations about whether these rates are going to move us toward that redevelopment and preservation. It's like you ask us and so many of the members of the community who want to move forward with. These rates do not give us anything in reserves for another two years, nothing. And I think that is a dangerous situation to be in.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Vock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes, passes four to one. Thank you. City Clerk's Matters, appointments to High School Rail Commission.
Okay. We did receive a couple of applications from people in the public that would like to serve on this commission. I still do need a couple more applications because we still do not have enough to have any alternate members on the commission. I did want to bring forward what I have so far and see if council wants me to continue, seeing if we can get some more applications.
I suggest that we table this for our next council meeting and put together an entire board at one time.
I agree with that. But I would also, there's one person down here that does not live in Indian River County, and I wonder about that.
And he, I strongly going to suggest that we do not accept him. He is actually an employee of Allaboard, Florida, and wants to serve on our city's mission, and I don't think that's quite what we were looking at.
No, if it's a conflict. Actually, that wouldn't be bad to have an alternate as a non-voting member, just for informative reasons.
A non-voting member would be fine, but not as an alternate.
The only thing I would point out. Wait a minute. Our code requires residents at least in the county for a year before you get appointed to a board or commission.
Then he's not possible.
No.
But we could still invite him to be a, a leave.
Yeah, absolutely.
There we go. Pretty good.
And he does realize that he doesn't live in the city, doesn't live in the county, he just wants to be able to attend the meetings if there are questions asked.
That's fine. And actually, that's probably a good idea.
So we'll bring this back.
So you need two more members, Tammy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
At least two. At least. It'd be nice to have a number of people so we could make an informed decision rather than just appointing anybody who put their hand up.
Just as a question, has any of the council members reconsidered possibly having that meeting on Election Day?
I'd rather not have it, frankly.
We've just scheduled a bunch of things for November fifth.
Well, we can, you know, that can be moved to the next meeting.
I would rather not have it, but I didn't bring that up at the last meeting because I, the consensus seemed to be that.
And the mayor did make a point. And nobody said anything, so I called it off. I mean, I.
You did.
I asked everybody, and no one said a thing, so.
What have we got scheduled that is going to be a problem?
The only thing that we have scheduled is the ordinance for the annexation.
You've done the advertising.
I have done the advertising for that. Things here, I haven't done any advertising on yet.
Well, we can make it a short meeting, can't we?
Could we do a short meeting?
Yeah.
I'd say go ahead and do it, yeah.
We are in Vero Beach.
Just have that one item on there?
Okay. Wayne, you don't look happy.
No, that's fine.
Is that all right?
That's fine with me. I mean, I think.
Is that all you want on the agenda, is that what?
Keep it as short as you can, Jim.
Right.
Tammy?
I mean, we will need to probably take a new vote on these other items to reschedule, or just one vote to. I'll make a motion to reschedule those hearings.
I'll second it.
To the fifteenth?
To the fifteenth.
The fifteenth?
All in favor?
Wait, I'm sorry, have they already been advertised as the two specific dates?
No.
And we will have to have public comment. That's the state law now.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
That could.
It's Election Day, so there'd be some one member that probably won't come.
All in favor of rescheduling? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously.
All right, and I have one other item, it's just some reappointments to some of our commission and boards. The first board is the Airport Commission. Mrs. Barbara Derndak's term expires on November fifteenth, and she would like to be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint.
I believe she should chair, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
All in favor of the reappointment? Aye.
Aye.
And then on the Code Enforcement Board, Mr. Kirk Noonan, Mr. James Richardson, and Mr. Harry Howell's terms all expire on October fifteenth, and they would all like to be reappointed.
I have, I have problems twofold with that. The first problem I have is I don't think we need a Code Enforcement Board, I think we need a magistrate or some judicial sort of individual to rule on our behalf. The second thing is.
I'm sorry, but that would require a.
That's how different we structure.
I understand that would require action. I understand that would require action, but I'm suggesting to you that we should, there are other communities that do it that way, and I think it makes a great deal more sense.
But that would not, there's no way we could get that done by this need.
Aren't there state regulations as how those is formed?
Well, actually, your Code Enforcement ordinance provides for magistrates. You can appoint magistrates. The way it's worded right now, though, we approached it the same way we did the Code Enforcement Board. Right now, it provides that the magistrate would have to live in the city and also that they would have to work unpaid. Does require it to be an attorney. We haven't put any requests out to see if there are perhaps any attorneys within the city that would volunteer their time. I understand there are some places where that happens. More common is that they are paid a nominal amount, somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for their work. So if, unless we were to get volunteers, number one, we probably need to change our modifier ordinance to just say, to take out the restriction about residency. And really, you know, a violator in front of the magistrate may say, well, you know, you're a resident of the city, so of course you're going to find for the city, you know. So they, that kind of takes that argument away if you don't have that requirement. So, I mean, it's up to the council, we could see if there's perhaps anybody that'd be interested in volunteering their time.
I think we should explore it.
I don't. I like the way it is. I like a cross-section of citizens that make a decision, not some dictatorial attorney.
It's going to have to be paid, yes.
Yeah.
Well, if that's the consensus, that's the consensus. The second thing I have to say is that Mr. Noonan and Mr. Richardson are not acceptable to me.
Ms. Vock?
Yeah.
Ms. Vock, how long have Mr. and Mr. Richardson both served the city of Vero Beach?
Mr. Noonan has been on the board since two thousand and four, and also Mr. Richardson's been on the board since two thousand and four.
I'd make a motion to reappoint.
And, and, I'm sorry, and Mr. Howell? Just one year, right?
Yes, he's only been on there since two thousand and twelve.
You know, this might, I don't know how you would do this.
I'm sorry, I wasn't finished.
Oh, really?
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, was he appointed for a one-year term?
He took someone's position.
He took some, okay. I wondered how that happened. Okay.
Okay, well, I mean, I think, you know, it's no secret that this is about the short-term rental thing. Mr. Noonan, Mr. Richardson, you know, went ahead and upheld a complaint. You know, it'd be nice if we could find a way, they could just say, well, we'll get the decision from the courts, and if they were right, we'll reappoint them, if they were wrong, we'll find somebody new.
Well, in the meantime, we need somebody on there, we're just letting.
Well, I can live with what Jay said, if that would be the, since, and of course, we're standing for reelection, a couple of us, so, you know, I might not be here, but if I were here, I could stand with what he said. And if, if it's upheld, the code's upheld, I would agree with what he said. You know, they caused us an expense. If they're upheld, I can certainly agree with, that their judgment was right. I don't happen to believe their judgment was right, and they caused us an expense. But I can live with what Jay said.
Let's wait until the court comes back, and then we can make a decision as to remove them. We can remove them at any time.
Agreed. And with that said, I suggest that we just go ahead and we reappoint these, and then we review them when the decision's made.
I'll make a motion again to reappoint them. Half a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Myself.
Passes. City Manager, you have anything?
I'm sorry, we have Recreation Commission as well, Tammy?
And Greg Holton.
The last one, Mr. Holton's term expires on November 15th, and he would like to be reappointed.
And I believe he's been on the Recreation for 20-some-odd years?
Long time.
He's actually been on there since, well, this is not correct.
Do your math.
Yeah. I would say about 17 years.
17 years, yeah. And he does represent the disabled members of our.
I'd like to see him reappointed. I'd make a motion.
And I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to report, but stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the City Manager?
Jim, I have a question from the September 19th Vero Beach Tree and Beautification Commission. One of the things that was brought out was that the tree trimmers in our city do not require a license, even though some other cities do. And it was stated that that might be a really good idea to have them pass a test to get a license to preserve the tree canopy in our area. Is that something that is, I would, we don't have time because everyone's really tired, and they don't want to talk about it right now, but it's something I'd like to learn some more information about, how municipalities go about doing that, if it's a good idea, what the results are.
Now, they obviously have to have a business license, but you're talking about training of some type?
Correct.
Arbor's training.
I mean, I know I came home and had a tree trimmer, and he just messed up the tree really bad. I mean, do we not require a license? So, if we could just talk about that.
We'd check into that.
Thank you. That was all I had for you.
New business, lifeguard equipment requirements. Ms. Turner?
I brought this up to you. This is a list of some capital equipment that's needed by our lifeguards, and obviously, they're the ones that are out there trying to protect our citizens and our tourists. I believe it's a public safety issue. Many of these items I had seen on their wish lists five years ago, six years ago, when I was back in finance, and I see Rob Slezak, our manager of Recreation, shaking his head. And I think they just became so discouraged with not being able to get any capital items through the budgets that they quit bringing it forward. And I do believe that these are vital things for the safety, and I would like to ask council to move forward with allocation of at least $50,000, or I should say, between $40,000 and $50,000. $50,000 is their max.
Jay, I know you're working with a group that is trying to do some fundraising for the lifeguards and for the recreation needs of the city. What are you guys looking at in terms of perhaps over the next year of raising?
Well, right now, we've got only, I think, about three events on the horizon. The lifeguard, we're looking for an event for the lifeguards to benefit them. You know, I don't, I don't know if we'd come up with $50,000, but I think we'd come up with a portion of it. We're also looking for people to sponsor different pieces of equipment on here. I know I've talked to members of the staff to see if we can get radios. We went through the hurricanes. I know TND uses radios, and I've talked to a number of those guys, go around and try to find radios for the lifeguards. The last, last meeting I had with the lifeguards, I mean, it became very apparent that, you know, we've got some near misses there on the beach where people have come very close to drowning, and we've got to take that serious. We are a tourist community, and I, you know, I think we've got to make sure that our tourists are safe. One bad accident, and it can severely damage the image of Vero Beach.
I know by saying this, Mr. Connor will probably shirk a little bit, that I know we have some extra money in the, but that all of the budget funds for next year have not been allocated. I should put it that way. I know that leaves you a small cushion, but if anything, with those funds, I would like to see us move forward with these, with this capital purchase.
What I'd like to see is the Parks or Lifeguard Association prioritize what they want, and then we'll go from there.
Also, Mr. Connor.
I believe they did that with the survey that they provided us for earlier this evening, and they said that the most important thing that they wanted to see was a tower at the Humiston Park.
Polar wants equipment. You want a tower. I want to see a list from the Recreation Department of which is, what's the prioritization.
Mr. Slezak, when these were presented by the lifeguard captain, were they not prioritized? Or is there, I understood that that was their priority.
You build a tower, you're going to need to fill it with a body.
No, this is at Humiston where we already have lifeguards. So, we're not talking about Sexton. That's a different issue.
I'm sorry, I meant Sexton.
Yeah, what I was going to say is that when the lifeguard captain, he presented those in order from one down, and number one was Humiston. According to the list, number one was Humiston, number two were radios.
Radios.
Three was an ATV, storage shed, four, the ATV, a J.C., paddleboard replacements, and laptop computer. Now, from that study that Tracy's talking about, they didn't mention some other things, but these are some of the things that he mentioned were things that futuristic, like Sexton Plaza, like guarding it and all those other things. Humiston Tower, the idea with Humiston is you have, when you're at Humiston Beach, you have the building there, but you don't have a tower, so there's no way to guard from that building. They can store things in that building, but they go out on the deck, and they're right there on the stairs with an umbrella. If you've ever been out there, you'll see them under the umbrella. Of course, they've got the elements and the heat and everything else.
Okay.
And you have people walking behind them, always asking questions and things like that. And I know that's, that's a concern of theirs, is just if they can enclose it, have some air circulating through there, and be able to focus without having people constantly walking up to them.
Okay.
That's the idea with the Humiston.
Something that we heard to date, that I heard for the first time, is they're willing to, if we purchase some equipment to help build what it is they want, is that?
Right. Yep. And that was, that was.
Maybe some way to defray some of this cost as well, Mr. Connor, but.
I think the idea would definitely be one of between the fundraising group and the idea with the Vero Beach Lifeguard Association helping offset those and do the best we can.
Jim, would you get together with the lifeguards and prioritize these and the numbers behind each one of these issues?
Craig, I have it. We'll take this list.
I was going to say, we have those at this point, Mr. Mayor, so I'm not sure what other information you need.
That last sheet has the order, just to let you know, Craig.
Okay.
Well, why don't we make, you know, instruct the City Manager to make it a priority to get, to have the city resources put to bear and see if we can knock this down, these prices down, and get these items into action, and then bring this back as old business and keep it front and center.
Yeah, I agree with that, and also have Mr. Connor say how he would handle financing this, not necessarily, I don't know how he would do it, but I'd like to give him a free hand of how he would do it.
Well, I just see things like new radios. We've got radios. TND's got radios, storage shed. I'm sure there's probably a storage shed somewhere, laptop computer. I mean, these are things that perhaps we've already got somewhere. I mean, we have some employees that have left. I'm sure there's a lot of spare computers around.
And the Rotary Club recently donated a paddleboard. There might be other community organizations that would be happy to donate.
But that has been on their list for years. What I'm saying is that they have gone under-equipped for so long because they haven't been willing yet.
Right, and I think that we have made a decision that at this point, we're going to ask you to come up with an action plan.
What I've heard, these six items that you would like to have implemented in the lifeguard, so let us figure out how to make that happen.
When would you bring it? Would you bring it back? The second meeting in November?
Probably the first, the 15th of November would be the meeting that we'd probably come back to you on.
Okay, because I think we're all.
It's actually the 19th.
We're all in support of it. It's just, let's figure out.
Try to figure out how to make it happen.
Come on and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Paul.
Mr. Kramer?
Well, I had worked with the, with Tim here at the Marine, Marina, trying to figure out a different way to recognize the exemplary service that Steve Martin had done with our Marine Commission. Good grief, 38 years, I believe it is. I can't imagine being on a board for that long, but it certainly demonstrates quite a lot of passion. What we had done, I believe, a couple of years ago is that we had came up with the idea of vanity signs, and where we would just print signs, and then we'd put them up over the normal street signs. And I thought it would be a kind of really good idea to do something like that to commemorate Steve Martin's service. And the reason I thought we'd do it in the form of a vanity sign is that it, it's not formal, and it's very prominent in that location, and I think it'd be very fitting to name, I guess, we wouldn't be naming the street after him, but it would be known as a road named after Steve Martin. But anyway, you know, the cost is about $60, I'm told, depending on whether we'd have to put a pole there, and I just asked the City Council if we would approve such an expense to moralize Steve Martin.
I would also like to see some type of a unveiling with members of the public and some information about him, because he really was a valuable servant to the city.
Well, if, you know, the idea is if we can just, you know, approve of the funding and then let the Marine Advisory Commission, which he served with.
Come up with a.
Come up with the way to do it. You know, ceremony would be wonderful.
Yeah, I'll go along with that, Jay.
And I think we have a sign department, and they can even make them sign.
Yeah, we do.
So, we will proceed, and Tim and I'll get together as to a location and recommendations to the Marine Commission and try to set up something, but we'll get the sign erected.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Individual council members matters. The mayor's going to pass. Mr. Carroll?
I will cut this short, just a few announcements of things happening in the community. We've talked a lot about pharmaceuticals, drugs that people don't have a use for, or they don't want to take the rest of the prescription, they dump it down their toilet, and it goes in to our wastewater and into the lagoon. Operation Medicine Cabinet is taking place on October 26th. Any drugs you have, you can take by any of the local Walgreens between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and drop those off, so that could help our lagoon. Something everybody can do. A lot of us were out at the airshow, and I'll let somebody else talk a little bit about that, someone who actually got up close and personal with the airplanes. Couple of cool things going on. The Riverside Children's Theater is having their Sleepy Hollow, the Musical Tale, as well as the Halloween Spooktacular House on October 18th, 19th, 25th, and 26th. So, if you're young or young at heart, you might want to go out for that. On October the 19th, at Vero Beach High School, they're having the Treasure Coast Crown Jewel Marching Band Festival, which is always a lot of fun. There's lots of traffic around the high school that day, so try to stay away from the high school unless you're there to buy tickets for the fabulous marching band festival. And then in our downtown area, there's another great haunted house for everyone young at heart to go to, again, on the dates of the weekends of 18th and 19th and 25th and 26th. And that's at our historic Florida Theater. A lot of people in this community have never even been inside the historic Florida Theater, and it's been transformed into movies come alive haunted house. So, I hope everybody can go out for that, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be attending another F Florida Municipal Power Association meeting on Thursday. I have noted in the agenda, there is no item considering the FPL offer on either the Board of Directors Agenda nor on the ARP, All Requirements Project Agenda. Sorry, get into too many of these letters. Had the pleasure of celebrating the 10-year anniversary at Harvest Food. They have built an incredible enrichment center. They are providing all types of education for those searching for jobs in computer skills, financial skills, and have built a great center there. Once again, it's really a hand up instead of a hand out. Want to thank members of the council who put up with my bowling on Saturday for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Had a lot of gutter balls, a lot of wild ones going, but it was, it was great to have the support of council on that. If anybody would notice, I have my red high heel on here, a reminder that safe space, that the real men will stand up, walk in the red high heels. That'll be Saturday at Indian River Mall. This is a fundraiser for providing protection and safe space for women and children of abuse. And another plug-in for the Halloween Parade. This is, remember, this is the 54th Halloween Parade, Saturday, October the 26th.
Mr. Kramer?
We always pretty busy, busy couple of weeks. Attended the Buggy Bunch fundraiser dinner, had a violinist come and play and did quite a show. The National Night Out at Riverside Park, sponsored by the Vero Beach Police Department and the Sheriff's Office, was a great event. Got a chance to get out there and kind of rub shoulders with the, our law enforcement people and have a little bit of food. The meeting with the Vero Beach Lifeguard Association, had a great breakfast meeting. Had the opportunity to listen to the lifeguards as to the events that they've got coming up. They've got a whole list of fundraising events, and I would encourage them to come up to the podium during the meetings and tell everybody about them. Also had a, quite a, quite a part in the airshow. Next time you go to the airshow, you might want to think twice about the ribbon cutting ceremony. Jim and I actually went out there with, good grief, we were like about a 15-foot pole, and had an airplane come by and cut the ribbon while we were holding it out on the tarmac. I do have that on video, if anybody cares to see that. The same day, we did the judging at the cupcake challenge for the Michael J. Fox Association. Was very impressed at the lovely young ladies that put on quite a show and put on a tremendous amount of effort. I did not realize that they took that so seriously, but they had some great, great cupcakes, and I think I was on a sugar buzz for the next two days. We did the bowling for kids' sake. You know, I gotta say, that was really, real impressed that all the council members can come together and the county commissioners could come and see who could make the biggest[1706.16]